Festerson, Gray, Jerem, Mulligan, Stotterd, Thompson. Mr. President.
Here. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? And would you remain standing for the invocation given by Councilmember Franklin Thompson?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before I say the prayer, I'd like to have a short reading. It's very short. It's from one of the holy books, and there are many different holy books. Just happening to read from one of them today. 1 Corinthians 6:12. And it says, "All things are lawful unto me, but all things are not expedient." Lord, help us to better understand not only those things we can see and understand with the natural mind, but also those things that are unseen, those things that can only be understood with a spiritual ear and a spiritual eye. Amen.
City Clerk certifies publication on daily record on August 13th. It was for a pre-council and regular city council meeting, August 17, 2010. A current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
If you have a cellphone or pager, we ask that you turn it off or to vibrate. Mr. Clerk, first item?
Items five and six go together. Five is the public hearing on the Creighton University Project located at or in the vicinity of 25th and California Streets, which is in the resolution, which is item six, resolution that required by 13/11053 of the Act. The area where proposed projects are to be located are within the city of Omaha, generally north of I-480 and east of North Freeway, which areas are to be, have been previously designated by the city as substandard and blighted. Such designated areas ratified and confirmed, and the proposed projects are hereby determined to be located in the substandard and blighted areas, and the projects are hereby determined to be within and in compliance with the master plan and the redevelopment plan of the city of Omaha.
Public hearing on items five and six begin now. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Motion approved.
No lights. Roll call.
Festerson, Gray, Jerem, Mulligan, Stotterd, Thompson, Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero. Pursuant to City Council Rule 70, Agenda Items Number Seven through Eight shall be laid over two weeks for publication in public hearing. Pursuant to City Council Rule 70, Agenda Item Number Nine through Ten shall be laid over for two weeks. Liquor, Item Number 11, Omaha Keno King, 6553 Ames Avenue, new application, no location. We have communications from their attorney requesting a one-week layover to August 24th and continue the public hearing, and we have communications opposing.
We have a motion?
Motion to lay over one week.
Pete has his letter.
Mr. Festerson.
Thanks. I agree with the motion. In fact, I was going to make the motion as a courtesy to the attorney involved who can't be here today, but I was also just going to comment that the council voted on this several weeks ago and voted to deny. And I don't think anything's changed since then, and that'll be my continued opinion at that point, but I'm willing to give him that courtesy of a discussion next week.
Thank you. No further lights. Roll call.
Festerson, Gray, Jerem passes. Mulligan, Stotterd, Thompson, Mr. President.
Yes.
And Jerem passes the second time for a potential conflict of interest. It's laid over six, zero, one passing. Item Number 12, Guacamaya, 5002 South 33rd Street, request permission for a special designated license for a beer garden on September 10th from 4:00 to 1:00 a.m. with music till 12:00 midnight, and September 11th from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m.
Public hearing on item Number 12 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Sean Kelly, 7134 Pacific, Mr. President, members of the council. I'm here representing Guacamaya, the applicant. I hope my communications have answered questions eight and nine to the application, and with that, be happy to answer any questions. The applicant is present and a representative from the Mexican Center of Cultural Arts is here as well. So with that, be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Second. Roll call.
Festerson, Gray, Jerem, Mulligan, Stotterd, Thompson, Mr. President.
Yes.
And Jerem passes the second time for a potential conflict of interest. It is approved, six, zero, one passing. Item Number 13, Resolution that Big Red Lottery Services has granted approval to operate a satellite Keno location at the Observatory Lounge, 2810 South 148th Avenue Circle.
Public hearing on item Number 13 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council. My name's Katrina Coffey. I'm Vice President of Marketing for Big Red Keno. We're located at 11248 John Bolt Boulevard. This Keno location, the Observatory, is actually an ownership change. It has Keno right now, and we're just asking for your approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Second. No lights. Roll call.
Festerson, Gray, Jerem, Mulligan, Stotterd, Thompson, Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero.
Thank you.
Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause an item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from consent agenda shall be taken up by the council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were moved, unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
Public hearings on Agenda Items Number 14 through 17 were held on August the 10th. Do we have a motion?
Motion approved.
Lights. Roll call.
Festerson, Gray, Jerem, Mulligan, Stotterd, Thompson, Mr. President.
Yes.
They're passed, seven to zero.
Public hearings on Agenda Items Numbers 18 through 25 begin now. 18 through 25 begin now. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Motion approved.
No lights. Roll call.
Festerson, Gray, Jerem, Mulligan, Stotterd, Thompson, Mr. President.
Yes.
They're all adopted, seven to zero. Now ordinance on final reading, Item 26, ordinance to approve the collective bargaining agreement in the city and Omaha Police Union Local 101. A, B, C, and D are all amendments, and E through K are communications or documents submitted.
The public hearing was held on August the 10th. Mr. Thompson, sit down, sir. Public hearing's closed.
I'd like to move to suspend the rule to address a conflict of interest, Mr. President.
I'll have to rule you out. Warder, would you please sit down? Public hearing's closed.
So you want to address the conflict of interest?
There is no conflict of interest.
Will you not address the conflict of interest, Mr. President?
Public hearing is closed, sir. Okay.
Don't want to let the people speak?
Mr. Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move Amendment A, and I have several amendments here, and this is the hardest one to convince my colleagues that we should do it. And the reason why is because it has to do with overtime that's already earned by those who are currently working. And I know I have an uphill battle on this one, but as I, as I read at the beginning of the meeting, there are all kinds of things that we have that are lawful to us, but is it always expedient? And so this one, I'm, I'm going to go out on a limb, and I'm going to ask my colleagues to send this back, or at least amend this, send it back amended. And basically what Amendment A does, it says that out of all the overtime that's accumulated by current people, that they put a cap on it at 85%. And it does two things. It would help us save some money, but it would also help us divert some of those cases where you get people with 105% of what they made, or 90% of what they made when they were actually working on the force. And again, I know that this is asking a lot, but from the very beginning, that's what I've asked. I've asked for a lot. And so we're, I'm going to put that out there, hope I get a second. And remembering the reading that just because it's law for you, for you to have, does it always mean that you should have it? I know I'm stretching. I know I'm stretching there, but, but I've got to try. I'm hoping that we see the wisdom of seeing that perhaps maybe down the road, that 15% that I'm asking can be given back later, but for right now, we need a cap on it. So I'm hoping I can get a second on Amendment A.
No lights. Roll call.
Festerson, Gray, Jerem, Mulligan, Stotterd, Thompson, Mr. President.
No.
It fails on a two to five vote.
Mr. President, do I still have the floor?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'd like to move Amendment B. And what Amendment B does, it changes the age by which you, you evoke before you take a haircut. Right now, at age 55, if you, if you wait until then, then you can get your full pension. But if you want to go a little earlier, let's say 54, 53, 52, you have to take a haircut, a percentage. And what this does, it increases that 55 up to age 58. Once again, it's a, it's a measure to try and, and rein in the spending that we're going to have to have over the next 35, 40 years to pay for this. Unfortunately, the, the contract and the budget is tied together. And what we're having here is to try and, and impact the contract so that we can ease the tax burden on citizens. So we heard from Greg Rorschach last week, he wasn't able to give us any particular financials on it, but we heard that it could make a significant impact. So once again, I'm going to put that out as an amendment. I'm not going to belabor the day, because I know we've got a long day here, and I hope I get a second on this very, very important amendment.
Thanks, Mr. President. I want to take a second just to have some general comments, but pertaining to the series of amendments I guess we'll go through here to kind of give a sense of what I'm thinking on those, too.
Go ahead.
And that is that overall, I think this is a real complex issue, and we've gone through a lot of details over the last six months to a year, really. So I don't know that we need to address all those details here today. And I think, as evident by the World Herald editorial today, reasonable people can come to a different conclusion about it at this point, given what we're, the barriers we have to address it, and given what the magnitude of the challenge is. But I did come to my conclusion several weeks ago, that I think it is just still too long and still too expensive from what the council said it would do overall several weeks ago. And I want to touch upon just a few of those things, because I think it is an important enough issue that we should explain our positions a little bit in this forum before a vote. And for me, some of those main things are that it is a five-year contract. Make no mistake, it is five years, 2009 to 2013. And we said we'd do three, and I'm much more comfortable with three in this economic environment. We all said at the time, we wanted to reduce taxpayer exposure to it by not having taxpayers pay for the issue of spiking, which took the 13.5% original proposal down to 9.8% in terms of the city's contribution in this contract. And that hasn't happened either. It's back up to 12.5 to 13.5 over the context of this contract, and up to 13.5 for the next 50 years, in the models we're seeing to balance the unfunded liability. And then just a couple of other things. I do think for me, an issue is that it still is not substantially equal, which is an issue under our charter. There's various calculations about how you come to that conclusion, but to me, it's still an overall calculation of how we determine that as an overall contribution. And to me, that number is still 34% city contribution to 29% employee contribution. I think, to me, that's not substantially equal. And in terms of wages in this, in this proposal, the wages in this latest proposal are actually more than was originally proposed, and definitely more what the council said it would do at the time. In 2011, we have a 10.3% budgeted raise based on this contract and based on full comparability. And that might be something the council chooses to address as we discuss the budget as well, but, but that's a big number, and it gives full comparability in 2012 and 2013, too, which wasn't even part of the first proposal. And so that's concerning to me as well. And then some other technical issues, one being a paragraph that discusses, even though we're doing this, it may not be able to be considered, should there be future disputes at the CIR? And we know, I know we tried to neutralize that paragraph in our discussions, but to me, it really doesn't seem neutralized based on language that's still in there, and that's pretty concerning. So having just said some of those things, I wanted to, to get them out there and, and have them indicate why I have the position I do have. I agree with the amendments we're going through right now philosophically, but I also think they're a bit irrelevant to the process we have at this point, which is a contract before us that has been agreed to between the administration and the union, and is, and is before us for an up or down vote, and is, and is definitely tied with the budget we must consider next week. So I think it does need an up or down vote, and my vote will be down. I am voting no. And I will also take that one step further to say that, should it be approved today, it is so tied with the budget that, in my view, that will cause a tax increase. And I'm not supporting the contract, nor will I support any revenue increases in the budget that go to support that. So I want to make that clear today. Not for, not for applause purposes, but just for this being a major issue, we all need to clearly delineate our position on, and I wanted to do that as we started to go through all these different items.
Speaking for the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mulligan.
Thank you. I do like to make a brief statement here. I want to make sure that everybody understands my position as well on this very important topic. We have before us today a matter of great importance, an issue that has been created and exacerbated by taking the path of least resistance. This path has taken us down the road of financial disaster to a roadblock of unfunded pension liability in excess equal to the city of Omaha's annual budget. All in the name of cost-cutting and deferring the possibility of raising taxes, we have asked for and negotiated and approved lavish pension enhancements that, in addition to investment losses and contribution shortfalls, have placed us in the financial mess we find ourselves in today. The decision to raise our taxes was, although not intentionally, but consequentially, made when the 2004 agreement was modified and approved. We need to set into motion, we need to set our emotions aside and deal with our task at hand. We have before us today a newly negotiated agreement with our police union, an agreement that not only puts Omaha on the road to pension reform and fiscal responsibility, but also provides for pension fund sustainability, and ultimately into a surplus status in the future. This agreement also sets forth, also sets the stage for pension reform negotiation with Omaha's Firefighters The cost of inaction is high. Each year of delay will cost the city an additional $1.8 million annually to correct. The time to act is now. For the stated reasons, I will support this new contract. I feel it is in the best interests of the city of Omaha and truly begins pension reform. I urge my colleagues to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Stotterd.
Well, since everybody's talking now, I guess I'll take my turn also. But again, I talked a lot and gave a lot of reasons and concerns that I had over this contract last week. It was getting late when we were talking about it, and so I'm going to indulge my, my colleagues with repeating some of the things I said last week. But first and foremost, what we hear often, and we hear repeatedly, what this contract achieves. Our administration did numerous town hall meetings that I went and listened to, and I stated last week that I felt like some of the information that was given was misleading. And I want the public to know what we're voting on today, and I want them to be assured of what we're voting on and what is in this contract. Again, we hear over and over again, this ends spiking. First of all, and I will say, it depends on your definition. It ends spiking as we know it now, but to ask the question, under this new contract, can officers still retire at 100% plus what they are making? Yes, they can. Secondly, does it raise the retirement age? And some of the town hall meetings, even some of the slides, I felt were quite misleading. One of the slides in particular says that current employees must work five years longer, period. And I think a more accurate statement would have been, current employees must work five years longer to receive pension benefits at 75%. Because all you have to do is look at the language in this contract, and it's very clear, if you have 20 years or more of service, nothing changes. You can still retire at 45 after 25 years at 75%. It's the same as it was before. If you have 20 years or less of service, you can retire at 45, you still can retire at 45 after 25 years, but it will be at 70%. It's a 5% reduction. In the private sector, retiring at 70% is still very generous. If you look at the age at which pension commences, in the new contract, for all of those 20 years or less, it says age 45, all the way through. It is just a reduction of the pension maximum pension benefits if you retire earlier. Most of the changes for the age of retirement affects those new hires, and they consider new hires, all those that were hired after January 1st. But again, it basically says at age 50, for the biggest part, and that if they don't work at least until they're 50, they would receive a reduction in pension benefits, but they can still retire at age 50. I, you know, I take issue with some of all of the, the media attention that's been going on, radio commercials, television commercials. There was one out the other day that an officer says, "I have to work till I'm 65 before I can retire." I don't think that that officer said which year they were hired, or how old they were when they were hired, but I don't see anywhere in this contract that it says you must work till you are 65. Perhaps that officer started at a later age, and to get maximum pension benefits, they would have to work till they're 65. But they still can retire at 55. So raising age of retirement, I just addressed that. Now fixing the pension. Does this fix the pension? And the actuaries have told us many, many times, it leads us on the right path for sustainability. And if all the variables stay in place, like that are in this contract for the next 40 years, yes, it will lead to pension stability or sustainability. Is there another approach? Yes, there is. Is this the only approach? No, it isn't. In fact, the city council unanimously approved seven amendments several months ago that also achieved pension sustainability, and it did so with the taxpayers paying much less of the burden. So this is one approach. There are many approaches. Our goal when we passed the amendments was to have less of a burden on the taxpayers, and that is still what my position will be. I never implied ever to any of my constituents or to the public that I never wanted to do anything to fix the pension problem. It is quite the opposite. I actually wanted to do more, and I wanted to have a bigger impact sooner. That would be my position to have. So I never implied that I didn't want to do anything. Another thing is, is the statements that have been made over and over and at the town halls, is that this pension now will be based on base pay only, because that is what one of our amendments were. And for all new hires, it is based on base pay only. However, the one thing that we all have to understand is that the officers will pay into the pension based on base pay only. The citizens, the taxpayers, the city, will be paying into the pension based on base pay, specialty pay, overtime pay, holiday pay. So the city's contribution is still going to be based on all, all of the pay and specialty pay they receive. So there, you know, there are numerous issues that we have just addressed here. You know, this, this contract is a small step. I've heard many people say, "Well, we have to take little bites of the apple, and we're only getting a little bit, but this is more than we've ever gotten," or "This is more than we've gotten in the last 30 years." But you can't just focus on what's given up. You have to focus on what the city has given to give this up. One of our amendments said that we would agree to 100% comparability in the year 2011. And in the slides that the administration gave, they, it looked like that they had achieved what our amendment was. But our amendment didn't say that they would have full comparability in the year 12 and 13 also. This contract guarantees 100% comparability in salary benefits and healthcare in 11, 12, and 13. We don't know what the situation, the financial situation of the city will be in those years. If we would go to the CIR in 11, or in 10, it would be in 10 now, they would give them comparable city salary increases. And with this contract, we are giving them comparable city salary increases for 11, 12, and 13. In fact, in the budget, there's over 10% in the budget for a salary increase for the police. So, you know, I question if going to the CIR would actually cost us that much more, because if we're taking little bites of the apple, I think if we could do, if we had a shorter contract like we originally did, because our contract ended in the year, after the year 11, the new contract ends after the year 13. That's two more years. If we would get back to the table sooner and try to take more bites out of the apple sooner, we could hopefully achieve more, more pension reform, and we could get bigger gains, and we could get bigger gains sooner. So I'm giving you the reasons why I am not going to vote for it. It, again, it is, I've received hundreds and hundreds of emails, and most of the emails, I would say the majority, at least in my district, are opposed and opposed to the budget. This is not a statement against the police department. It is a statement saying that this is time to do something. You know, with this, what, how we're addressing the pension, the actuary has made a lot of assumptions. And, and the whole thing is based on assumptions. What's going to happen in the future, year by year, the next 40 years, what's going to happen? That's all based on assumptions. But I'll be willing to make an assumption now. If we go ahead and approve this contract, I'm willing to make that assumption that in several years, somebody else or another council is going to say, "Hey, it's not our fault, but that city council in 2010, they approved it." There, there was a newspaper that, the bottom line, that the police union sent out, and it basically said that. It said, you know, "It's not our fault." And I agree with them. It's not their fault. It's not just their fault. They were at the table, and they negotiated with the city council. The city council approved it, and the mayor signed it. But I don't want that to happen again in four or five years. I want in four or five years, people to say, "The city council in 2010 worked hard, and they worked hard to get some reform in something that was meaningful and something that would last, and we need to know all the implications of what this contract is going to do in the future." So with that, I'm going to yield the floor. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a reminder to everyone, this, the outbursts of clapping and yelling only prolongs the session, okay?
We got nowhere to go.
So let's just, okay?
And a board draw, gee.
There you go.
Okay. Okay. That's, that's enough. Otherwise, we'll have to ask you to leave, or I don't want to have anybody removed from a public hearing, okay? So all it does is prolong it. So let's just, let's...
Mr. Thompson, you're my representative. Will you recognize me and let me speak?
We will, we'll get to that process. Mr. Thompson, you're up next.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have a...
We have a housekeeping, we have a housekeeping thing here. Before I go on to my next statement, I think we have a, an amendment that was proposed, and then a second. Could we go ahead and vote on that before I make my next statement, sir?
No further lights. We have a motion and a second for...
And this again, this again is B, which is raising the age from 55 to 58, so that you have to stay longer, or you take a haircut, a reduction.
No further lights, roll call.
Festerson?
No.
Gray?
No.
Jarom?
No.
Mulligan?
No.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
No.
It fails on a 2 to 5.
And Mr. President, I still have the floor, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'd like to also put out there and propose Amendment C. Now, what this does, it addresses what Councilman Stothard just so eloquently talked about. We've got to have some more give backs. And once again, I'm going to go back to my words, some will call it rhetoric, but for me, they're real. And that's the whole thing about expediency. Now, the president of the union said last week that he had the law, the facts, and the solution on his side. And I know he's got the law on his side, and the other two, you know, we can debate back and forth. But I'd like to ask, does he have expediency on his side? And I don't think he does. And I know you're going to say, well, there's that word again, you're throwing it around. It's no such thing. It doesn't exist in today's world. I think it does. In fact, we pulled off the internet just today, Jacksonville, Florida. And even though it's not final, we have the city leaders and the police and fire pension people agreeing on changes, benefit changes, pension changes, that will result in about $8 million, $800 million over the next 35 years. In addition, they're deciding to eliminate drop, because they said that it's expensive. In addition to that, they're increasing employee contributions. They're also increasing the tenure that's needed, five years. So instead of 20 years, it's 25 years for those who are the veterans. They agreed to take a 2% pay cut. And there's some other things here. So don't tell me that my expediency is outmoded or outdated. It's not. Other cities are doing it. And why should Jacksonville beat Omaha to the table and being an example? We are a city descending from the sky. We are America's role model. So let's act like it, and let's, if they can do it in Jacksonville, we can do it here. Now, I know, I know I'm, I'm probably not going to get the votes, but I am serious about this vision that we have to buy into in order to make this thing work. Think of the alternative. The alternative is a very, very, very expensive bill over the next 35, 40 years. I'm going to conclude, so I don't want to draw this out, but Amendment C says, for those, there are three categories. For those who are 45 years old and have at least 20 years of service, the age would be increased from 45 to 50. This is the proposal. And the percentage of payout for pension would be reduced from 75 to 72. That's not a very large drop. That's reasonable. Then there's a second group. That group are members with less than 20 years of service. Again, we want to raise their age from 45 to 50, and their pension payout from 75 to Then the third group are any new hires, and by new, we're saying that you're hired after January 1st of this year. And the age would still be 50. I want it to go 55, but I want to be reasonable. I don't want to be draconian. I want to be reasonable about these, these things I'm asking, these extra give backs. But here's where it would really help us. Instead of 75% payout, go down to 65. Those are the changes that the Milliman representative last week said could have a significant impact. I'm from the old school that says, when you're in a hard time, everybody pulls together. We all tighten our belt together. And even though I do believe that the police union has given more than they gave the last time, it's still not enough. And so, once again, I'm asking this council, let's send it back, and let's have them at least think about some of these things. Just over the last week, the constituents have come out now more vibrant and vocal than they've ever had before. And perhaps one more week can make a difference, who knows? I never thought that we'd get rid of minimum manning and fire, and yet, I think citizens made a difference on that. One week can make the world of a difference. And so I'm asking this council, let's send it back with this amendment, and I hope I get a second.
We have a motion and a second. No further lights, roll call.
Festerson?
No.
Gray?
No.
Jarom?
No.
Mulligan?
No.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
No.
It fails on a 2 to 5 vote.
There is one more amendment here, Mr. President, and it's a letter D. And that has the whole, that had to do with the whole issue of whether or not the council votes first, and then after we vote, then the union votes. And as you know, or maybe the audience doesn't know, it's the other way around. Traditionally, what happens is that the union always votes first, and then it's sent to us, and we vote. I believe that we should not waive the law. Thereby, we should be removing Section 2-35 from this particular proposal. If it passes, I don't think it should pass with this in there. I think we should vote last. In addition, I almost wish we would lay this vote over, because I'm not, I don't think it's smart to vote for the contract before you vote for the budget. I think you vote for the budget first, and then the contract second, or at least, you know, both of them on the same day. A little editorial here. I've often said that my fight is not with my colleagues here, and these colleagues are in the same place that I was four years, four or five years ago. So I understand where they're at. And I understand that sometimes you have to look backwards and say, hmm, got to vote different the next time. But my beef is not with my council colleagues. My beef is not even with the mayor. My beef is with the union. And I believe that the union can and should give more. But I do believe that we should not vote first. And isn't it amazing, when we had this problem two weeks ago about sequestering the contract, how the law doesn't say that the public is sequestered from the contract, but yet, I was charged with breaking the law? And now here, we want to break the law, and it just seems like a hypocritical stance to me. We either keep the law, or we waive the law. How can you not waive the law on one hand, and then waive the same law on the second hand for your own benefit? That's the only criticism that I have today of the mayor's office, in that there's no consistency on that. I want to appeal to my colleagues to let's stay consistent. Let's stay with what the law says, and the law says we should vote second. And unless there is some compelling reason, and that reason for me would be a meaningful amendment, something that makes it better for the citizens. Give me an amendment, and maybe I will vote first. But other than that, as is, I think we should vote second, and I hope that I can get a second for this particular proposal, for this motion.
Mrs. Stothard.
Thank you. This is, again, we're talking about Section 2-35 of the city code, and I just want to make sure people know what we're talking about. Because Section E says, "The city council shall consider an ordinance to approve the labor agreement after the bargaining unit has approved the labor agreement." That's what's in city code. And so we're being asked to approve this today before the union votes on it. So we would have to waive city code to do that. Now, I want to ask, is city council chief of staff here, or did he bolt? Where is he?
He's right here.
He's come back.
Sorry about that.
Okay.
Warren Weaver, council staff.
Now, Mr. Weaver, you were here when this section of the city code was put in and adopted by city council, right? When was this adopted?
In 2004.
Was it after the 2004 contract?
Yes, it was.
Could you just review why this section was put into city code? As a specific, not the whole section, but why Section E, of why the city council will vote on a labor agreement after the bargaining unit? What was the intent of that? Because it's, to my knowledge, you helped draft the language for this ordinance.
Yes, I drafted the language. Lou Anderson was the chief of staff at that time. Actually, the section A through E outlined several different provisions that the council at that time felt needed to be more clarified and more explicit. It talked about some preliminary things that lead up to when the contracts are presented to the council. It talks about some periods of time of 14 days that the council has an opportunity of reviewing it. And it also restated that the council votes last. That, I believe, E, I don't have it in front of me. Didn't know I was going to address this issue, but that's what I recall from Section E.
So this was put into effect after the last contract?
That's correct.
So this indeed is the first contract since this has been put into city code that we're being asked to approve, and we're asked, being asked to waive it the first time, basically, it's being tested.
Yeah, the council dealt with a surveying contract last spring, and this is the first sworn contract that's, that's come back since then.
All right, thank you. City Clerk Buster Brown, you've been here a good 20 years. Do you remember any instances with a labor agreement that the city council votes before the union?
City Clerk Buster Brown, no, I do not remember any where the city council voted first.
And to change this, it, again, it would have to be, we're being asked to do that right now, and that would be to waive city code to allow us to vote before the union. So it would have to be an action of the city council.
That's correct.
And I just want to make one more point, because I do have a mass email that was sent out from the Omaha Police Officers Association that says, "Brothers and sisters, retire, brothers and sisters, it's time for action. The final vote for the contract is on Tuesday. This time, you deserve the opportunity to vote on a contract in which you have the final say." I don't remember us waiving this ordinance yet, so I don't know how you could send out an email and say that you will now have the final say when we haven't waived the ordinance yet. You know, the Omaha Police Officers Association certainly can't waive the ordinance. So we have not, we have not done that yet, and we're being asked to do that today, and maybe my colleagues will do it. But I think it was put there for a reason. And again, this is the first time since it's been adopted by a former council that it's in city code. It was put there for a reason, and first time it's tested, we're being asked to waive it. And so I'll yield the floor on this, on this item.
Thank you. Mr. Jarom?
Yes. My position on this amendment is, it only makes sense if we're voting on budget resolutions that we know what we need to do for purposes of funding government. So to me, it makes sense that we vote this before the budget for that reason. Second, I don't think that the public is really going to be interested to see the council arguing with the union, well, you have to vote first. No, you vote first. No, you vote first. I don't think it matters. I think it's, if we're in a position that we've studied this and done our due diligence, we, according to how we view it, can give it our thumbs up or our thumbs down. And the last thing I would say, with all due respect, and no diss on the last council, but the same group that gave us the contract that we're all here complaining about gave us this ordinance.
Thank you. Mr. Festerson?
Thanks, Mr. President. And I don't disagree with what was just said about the process. I think I do support this amendment, though, because I do believe it is important to maintain the process that's generally followed, particularly on an issue that's so big and complicated like this. But I would also acknowledge what Councilman Jarom just said, that it's very difficult to vote on a budget next week until we know the outcome of this contract, because in essence, this contract is the budget. When $20 million of the $35 million of tax increases is contractual in nature, it does almost appear that we need to know the outcome of this contract before we can deal with the budget. But having said that, I do support maintaining that process, and I've said that for several weeks, and I'll vote for this amendment.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. No further lights on Amendment D. Roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gray?
No.
Jarom?
No.
Mulligan?
No.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
No.
It fails on a 3 to 4 vote.
Mr. Gray?
Were you trying to operate your button?
I was trying to operate the button, but it wasn't working. I will go ahead. I make a motion to approve the 2010 police union contract.
Mrs. Stothard?
Thanks. You know, I'm having just a bit of a heartburn about letting the public speak and letting the public say what they want. I was approached by a gentleman on the way in. I don't know who he is, and I don't know who, what he wants to say, but he asked if he could make a statement, and we have called people up many times before, before a vote, and his name was Jerry Manelli. And if Jerry is here, I would like to just call him forward and be brief, but you asked me if you could say something, and I feel, and all due respect, I should let you, as well as the other gentlemen that would like to speak. I would like to allow them just a second to say what they want to say.
I'd just like to say that I've been...
Give us your name, please. Name and address.
Jerry Manelli, 126 in Pacific.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say I've been watching the TV and seeing things, and I've seen a couple of our councilmen be attacked by the police union. I've seen a guy who's, who's come up with some ideas, they've got attack ads after the guy, and I think it's, I think, I see a bunch of police officers here, and I, and I think this attack mode, you're turning the citizens against you. I love Omaha, I love being here, but we need to, we can't afford you guys anymore. You need to, you need to help, like, like our councilman here says. It's getting out of line. Anybody who goes against you, I've talked to some, see these guys up here? They're afraid of you. They're afraid to speak out. I talked to one of them, he says, "I'm afraid of the union. I could lose my job if the police union is mad at me." I can't believe how many people are afraid of a police unit. It shouldn't be that way. What's the matter with you cops? We're afraid of you. You come in here and say, "I got the law on my side, and that's what I'm going to do. If you don't like it, tough, that's what we're going to do." Aaron Hansen, I think he's a great negotiator. I'm a union pipe fitter. My pension isn't 10% of what a police is. I wish I had him negotiating for me when I retired. I pay $9,000 a year for my life, for my health insurance. These guys get it great. My brother's retired cop. Soon as he could get the hell out of here, he moved to Iowa. He pays $25 to license his truck. I pay $1,900, I just bought a new truck, $1,900. And Gary Grenant, I think it's getting to stink around here. And you being a retired police officer, you should abstain from voting on this. If you don't, you look just like, you're no better than these spikers. Spiking is legal, but it's wrong. Aaron Hansen got up at one of the police meetings. He said spiking was wrong, spiking shouldn't have never happened. I'm embarrassed by it, my members are embarrassed by it, but they all...
Okay.
How did this...
Excuse me?
Did it get carried away?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm asking you to abstain from this vote.
Wrap it up, please.
To make this look legit, because it doesn't look, it's starting to stink real bad around here. Thank you.
And can I, can I ask the other gentleman that asked to speak? And could you, sir, I don't even know your name, but you asked to speak, could you just keep it really brief? Like, 30 seconds?
Jim Johnson, 3118 Mason Street in Omaha. And thank you for recognizing me, my own councilman wouldn't, so. I'm not, I'm not part of any organization. I'm not a politician. I'm not anti-government, as, you know, many of you may think. I'm not. I'm a struggling taxpayer. You, Mr. Jarom, were elected to represent my views and the views of the constituents within your area, and you're not. You're voting your own way and not by what the people think. I, along with many other people, wish that we could get our votes back. You all were elected to represent the people of Omaha, and the people of Omaha have spoken to you loud and clear. We are opposed to this overly generous police contract. The tax increases that are attached to it are going to be too much for some of us to Some of you are not hearing us, and that is going to be your first mistake. Your second mistake will be voting yes on this contract, because the people... Some of you are not hearing us, and that is going to be your first mistake. Your second mistake will be voting yes on this contract, because the people will remember that the next time they vote. You were put in the office to find the hard answers, and yet I fear you're about to take the easy way out, and that's to raise taxes. The hard answer is to find a way to cut expenditures and spending the way that many of us do every single day to make your budget.
Could you wrap it up, please?
Yes. Final thoughts is, Mr. President, as a former member of the police union and someone that was covered by this contract, even though this contract today does not affect you, you have ties to that organization, and I also feel that you should abstain from this vote. If this contract is such a great deal for Omaha, there are six other members on this council that can speak for us. Personally, I don't think they can make it without your vote, and I think that your vote would be tainted. So I'm asking you, again, to abstain from the vote. And if this is such a great contract, let the other six members speak for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
Lot of beeping going on up here. Beep, 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 beep. Okay, thank you, Mr. President. One of the things I pride myself on is being fair and balanced. And I know, I know that the union and the police are not all bad. I know that. And I know that they've given more now than they have in the past. It would be erroneous to paint them as bad guys. And even I admit it that they're following the law. And I've asked them to consider going above the law. And so I made the statement last week that whenever these budget times come around, that there's a lot of posturing, and sometimes the posturing even gets into being like game playing. And nobody's innocent totally. If I go back and take a look at the 2004 contract, not just this one, but the earlier one, we had the public that could have done some things differently. We had the union that should have done things differently. We had the mayor that used his power inappropriately to get things that he shouldn't have gotten. And we even had council people, myself included, not voting the way that I should have. And we even had council staff that now provide things that we didn't get, we weren't provided back in 2004. So there's enough blame to go around. But the point I'm trying to make is that we all, whatever we do, we're going to have to move on and learn to live together. But in making this vote today, whenever I come up to a situation and I hear both sides having some good and some not so good, it's very typical, being an educator and working with debate teams a lot. I know that that happens. That there's very rare times when there's a clear-cut angel and a clear-cut devil. The day-night, up-down, black-white, either-or devil-angel thinking that sometimes we get into, it's not even real. And in our case, we have two sides that have some good and not so good, and they have some legitimate issues and some issues that need to be taken a second look at. So what do you do when both sides are kind of close? The answer is you change the channel and you start looking for other cues. And that's what I did on this one. I flipped the channel, and I started looking for other cues. And I think I found my cue. Now, last week, I held this thing up, and you know I wasn't very happy with it. Now, on the backside, it's just totally nonsense. Now, on the front side, I want to say that the union had the right to call me out for being from a past council that voted for this. They had the right to do that. And I even stood up and said I accepted certain contributions from the union in the past, and I've also stood up and accepted my responsibility for the way I voted in the past. Then I said that my constituents said, "Instead of throwing you out, we're going to send you back in and vote differently. We don't like the way you vote, but we like you." So they said, "Get back in there and do it right." I said, "Yes, sir." The thing that bothered me about the front side of this article is that there are three people on this council who should have been named, and only two of them were named. And I have to say, was that a little bit of giving certain people a pass, and then other people don't get a pass? And so that's the cue I looked for, integrity. And on that cue, that cue alone, I've got my answer. And my answer is, when you have two forces opposing, and they're close, which way do you go? I'm going with the citizens this time, because I think the citizens in this case, although they haven't been 100% accurate, they've shown more ethical side of the argument. And I just believe that if the union was truly, truly ethical, they would have named everybody in this article and not just some while giving others a pass. Because of that, I think I'm going to vote on the side of the citizens and vote this down no. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jarom?
Yes, I would echo the comments in part that Councilman Festerson made about reasonable people disagreeing on this. And I'd add to that, I think that even unreasonable people could disagree on this one. The, you know, one of the people that campaigned in the election when I was running in the primary could tell you at every neighborhood forum when we were talking to the public and answering questions, how many houses he had been to, he could update it the next week. It got to be like 1,700 or 50, 1,800. I think he had a houseometer. And I went to a heck of a lot of houses, too. And in speaking with people when I campaigned in my district, they told me three things. They said they wanted their retirement age raised back up. They wanted pensions based upon base pay only, and they wanted an end to spiking. Now, up until about a week ago, in the media, up until about a week ago internally, up until about a week ago, and the people have been emailing. I get, it's kind of interesting that I get very similar-worded emails that come in repeatedly. And either people are having an incredible mind meld or they're repeating stuff that they've been told or heard. But the 2004 contract is the thing that your ire should be directed at, because that lowered the retirement age and raised the pension benefits. So the debate here, as I see it, has been a unified debate in the public to achieve reform, to reverse those things that the last contract did. We're not debating about whether there should be reform. It's how quickly we should achieve reform, and how much reform can we reasonably be expected to achieve in this agreement? And that's where the disagreement is. And there is reasonable disagreement over that. And some people want more. Some people have moved the goalposts and changed their definition as to what spiking is. Spiking, at least to me, and what's been explained by the experts and the actuaries and through analysis, was the ability that officers were contractually given in the last contract. And some people say, and you, Councilman Gray, said you reported on it for years, is the ability of an officer in their last year of employment, when their pension benefit is calculated up till now, to work a ton of overtime to then drive artificially or spike their wages as well as to dump or cash out a bunch of comp time and accumulated leave. And by doing that, an officer with a wage down here all of a sudden has a wage up here in the last year of the contract. That process unequivocally, absolutely will end with the implementation of this contract. Now, Councilmember Stothard raised a very good point, and that is that, well, will there be any officers who could still get a pension more than what their pay is using overtime? And the answer is, there are approximately two dozen or more officers on force who, through this new system of current employees, except the 48 that we hired in January, that will be able to use a career overtime average. In other words, they will pay in to the pension on all of these wages as they continue to do. And then if they work over 470 hours a year, each and every year, for 20-plus years, then you will see their pay go up. But they've paid in on it. That, though, is transitioning out. Because with the 48 officers who hired and started in January, and going forward, they are all on a base pay pension only. Period. Now, as far as another significant, and really little talked about, benefit to this new deal has been something that was brought to light recently by the HR Director, Richard O'Gara, warning us about the staggering costs and continuing escalating costs of retiree healthcare. Something that has not been mentioned, what happens again upon ratification of this agreement, is that retirees will now go forward paying for health insurance. They will be paying, going forward, the same amount of premium as what the actives pay. And so if this, we're at 15% by CIR currently. And so if that becomes 20 in the next deal, guess what? The retirees go right up with it. It begins today. Now, another thing that happens is, and some people have had, said they had misinformation listening to the radio on this, but I think Councilmember Stothard and Councilmember Thompson pointed this out, is the age at which you can retire without these new penalties does go up and is raised for both active employees and new hires. So is it going up enough? Is it going up fast enough? Again, there is reform here. Is it enough? Reasonable people may say yes. Reasonable people may say no. Another thing that this does is this contract requires active police and all those coming in for the life of this deal. And let me make it clear. Mr. Johnson, I don't know if I'm going to be around in 2013. I really don't. And I don't operate as though I'm running for reelection on every vote. And I don't operate on pandering to people. And I don't operate with designs for the third floor. I don't operate with designs, you know, for mayor, for Congress, or anything else. I like being a city councilman, and I like to think at the end of the four years of people, enough of them think I did a good job, that maybe they'll reelect me. And if enough of them say that I didn't, I'll go back to practice in law full-time, and so be it. I can live with that. But I'm not here with designs to say and operate in a manner that makes me sellable for the third floor or any other job. I really am not. I love being a lawyer, and I love this, too. The last thing that this does, and I'd like to take a minute to talk about it, is takes the 0-0 wage freezes for 2009 and '10, and then does give comparability of wages as the law requires. You know, in the past, the public told me when campaigning, they had this frustration that it seemed illogical to them that we could trade such major pension benefit increases, lowering the age of retirement while raising the benefits in exchange for wage concessions. And at the time that I advocated for passage of the addendum that we, when we rejected the original proposed deal, I said, "Let's do a way, let's take that argument off the table. It is so short-sighted, it's costing us millions." Now look at it, hundreds of millions. And something that you all don't know, that I had, I don't know who put this on my desk, was, and these are public documents, you're all free to have them, year after year memorandum of minutes and resolution after memorandum of resolution from the Pension Committee, Pension Board, telling our then-elected officials and staff the problem. The underfunding of the pension going up and the need to fix it and address it and not wait, and even suggested pension funding solutions. And so, listen, I understand you're mad, and you've got every right to be mad. And if it's mad at me, that comes with a turf. But when I look at this agreement, it is a first step. It is not the step. It is not the only step, and reasonable people can disagree. And mark my words, if I'm around in three years, I expect more. I don't expect a retreat on any of these things. I don't. The times are changing, and that's my view on it. One last thing. And I think, Mr. Mulligan, you referred to it as the cost of inaction. I call it the ostrich approach. You know, you could say no to this. Kick the deal out of here. Send it to wherever it's going to go. And there's been a lot of talk about, well, what would the police, don't be afraid of the CIR. I mean, we know what that'll cost. We know what the other cities are doing. But let me tell you about this other type of lawsuit that maybe you have not, as a taxpayer, put a lot of time thinking about, because I haven't heard a lot about it in the news. And I have to tell you, it astounds me. There's lawsuits that I call the Calibro versus City of Omaha lawsuits. There's a couple of them that we know about. And that's when our collective bargaining unit members in the past have said, "Hey, city, this fund is underfunded. You're not putting in enough." And they've had success with those lawsuits. And a part of that 34% contribution that has a lot of you worked up, and arguably so, if this Calibro-type suit comes around for the next time, with the current state of our underfunding, with the current state of the evidentiary record of what our Pension Board has been saying year after year after year, with what the actuaries are saying about when this fund goes dry. And by the way, it goes empty in 20 years if we don't fix it. The cliff, the point of no return, like when the shuttle goes up into space, there's a certain point at which they can't turn around and come back. There's a point of no return on that pension fund, where no matter what we did, the cost of fixing it is beyond the means to restore the funding of the system. That's a lot sooner than 20 years, folks. So when the actuaries warn us about 1.6 or 1.8 million, or whatever it is, a year, and in a few years, that's about five or six million, and in 10 years, they're saying, you know, more than 15 million or 20 million, or maybe Greg, was it 50 million? 48 million. You know, where's your point of no return of doing nothing, digging your head in the sand? And if a judge gets this, particularly one appointed for life, who doesn't have to worry about facing the voters, those are the ones in federal court, you may see another Calibro judgment where you could take the 4 million that'll cost, or 5 million of cost in wages this year, or the 12.5 this year up to 13.5. And you can tack another zero on that and get up to 40 million really quick. With the pension underfunding, regardless of whose numbers you accept, and I know there's some people debating now the numbers, whether it's 520 million or 620 million, it's a lot of change. We very realistically face another Calibro suit. And that just isn't talked about by anybody. And everybody says, you know, "Well, what are you afraid of the CIR for?" I'm not afraid of the CIR. We have very good lawyers for the city. It's expensive. But by taking this first step in reform here today, it puts all that... But by taking this first step in reform here today, it puts all that out. It ends it. And it takes a first step. We may disagree whether it's enough reform, or that it's soon enough, but you know, in a year and a half, the negotiations start all over.
Thank you. Mr. Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President. As most of you know, I came out early in favor of the police union contract. And there hasn't been a lot of discussion by, you know, there's not been a lot of calls from the media or discussion, other than when I've generated, generated that discussion as to why I did that. I want to address a couple of things, though. First of all, before I get into some of the reasons for why I did that. First of all, when we talk about the council amendments that were introduced, when the council amendments, when the council introduced its amendments, it engaged in the negotiation process. And when you engage in a negotiation process, it is exactly that, negotiations. See, I'm hoping that my colleagues on the council didn't expect to get everything they wanted. Because if you got everything you wanted, that wouldn't be negotiation, that would be a dictatorship. So, we engaged in negotiations, and the Police Department gave a little bit more as a result of our efforts. So, I applaud the Police Department for their actions, in spite of the fact that, as Mr. Hanson accurately pointed out from, and I can agree with him, having been a negotiator working at Channel 7 for a number of years, sitting across the table from management, and then in another capacity as a manager, that there is a level of trust that has to be built before you can engage in effective negotiations. And at this point in time, there wasn't a lot of trust. So, but to assume that we were going to get everything we wanted because we introduced an addendum, what we actually did was engaged in the process of negotiation, and in negotiation there is give and take, and in very few instances is either side really happy that they got all they wanted. Secondly, let me talk about the views of the constituents for a moment. Because one person got up and said, "We're not listening to the people." I have had numerous people email me who are in favor of this contract. Now, who do I listen to? The fact of the matter is, in a democratic republic, what conscientious lawmakers should be doing is weighing both sides of the issue, doing your homework, and coming to an effective conclusion that is going to benefit the city as a whole. And we have to look at how we benefit the city as a whole. Because there have been both sides who have contacted me, both pro and con, to this contract. So, the next process I had to engage in was to do my due diligence, to do the homework, and come to a reasonable, or what I think is a reasonable, conclusion. Thirdly, someone said, "We're taking the easy way out, raising taxes." Raising taxes is the hardest way out. It's not the easy way out. Do you think we wake up in the morning and come in and want to raise taxes? I mean, do people really, really think that? I mean, are you really, do you really think that? I mean, I hope you don't. Because I, for one, living in the district that I live in, representing the district that I represent, detest the necessity for having to raise taxes. But, again, as you look at what is best, not only for my district, but for the city, the end result, in my opinion, had to come to supporting this contract. Now, why did I support the contract? We have a billion-dollar liability, and we have $400 million in the kitty right now, which means we're short $600 million. And these are for people who are already gone. They're not here anymore. We have to support, we have to contractually and legally do what is necessary to support those who are already gone. That's what, that's what this unfunded liability is all about. Not the current people who are, who are, who are here today. As a matter of fact, the people who are here today have gained, have engaged in a major concession as a result of working longer hours for less benefits, and putting more into the pension fund to help this city out. So, they are not the ones who, if you want to place blame, this is not the guilty party. These are the ones who are, the people who are working with us now are the ones who are working with us in an attempt to try and solve this very serious problem. Now, what happens if the contract, and my council colleague, Chris Jerem, pointed out very effectively, I think, some of what will happen, but let's talk about some of what else will happen, if this contract is not passed. Officers will continue to be eligible for early retirement at 45, at 75% of their pensionable pay. Their comp banks and their special time banks are all full, so contrary to popular belief, the city cannot manage spiking. The buckets are already full, and there are a number of officers that will continue to spike. In the meantime, we can sit here and speculate about what the CIR might do, but based on history, what is likely to happen? And what is likely to happen is that the CIR will engage in and probably give pay increases to both police and fire based on comparables of other cities. That is the most likely scenario, as we have looked historically at what the CIR has done. That is most likely what's going to happen. Now, the biggest problem is the $600 million unfunded mandate that is going to continue to grow by 650 and eventually 700 million. And every time, every year it grows, it grows by at least somewhere around 1.8%, if I'm right, Greg. Somewhere around 1.8% it will grow. And as that grows, that's about 3/4 of one penny in a property tax. So, if we do nothing, this is going to continue to grow, it is going to cost us more later on, and I keep hearing the story, I keep hearing people say, "We're going, we're going to have to wait for the economy to get better." What if it doesn't? What if this is the new norm? Then what do we do? I mean, these are things that I think we all really need to consider thinking about. Some have made the issue that maybe we ought to file bankruptcy. And as my colleague pointed out, we're at 26 cents at a mill levy, and the state law gives us 50 cents. So, we're about halfway to our lid. There've been remarks made by state senators that they will continue to take from Omaha, especially starting with the 2.1 or 2.2 million in gas tax, because we pay the lowest sales, we pay the lowest property tax of any municipality around us. The lowest sales tax, and we don't charge a garbage fee. So, they will continue to take, and they've already said that there is no possibility of a half-cent sales tax until we have shown that we have the stomach to do what is necessary and raise property taxes. So, with the mill levy already being what it is, and the very real possibility that a court can step in, and if you're going to file bankruptcy, what a court is going to do first is find out what your ability to pay is. So that court most likely will charge the additional 24 cents, which will drive up the property tax. And then, even when you're talking about going into bankruptcy, you're talking about reallocation. So, it doesn't get us out of the liability. Oh, and when we're talking about the CIR, keep in mind, the CIR has never addressed the issue of pensions. Never. And it is not likely that they're going to do it now. So, at the end of the day, we could end up owing $7 million or more that we would have to pay right away, and we will still have a pension shortfall that they will not address, that probably will be addressed in the courts. And as my, as my colleague pointed out, if you look at the past letters that have been sent by the actuary, strongly recommending that we do something about this pension shortfall, and the court cases, the two court cases that have already gone against us, the likelihood that we will win in court is not very good. So, and I want to point out, one of the major reasons why I continue to support this, why I continue to support and will support this police union contract. Let's be clear about this. The people in this city who will be most affected by any increase in taxes is District 2, North Omaha, my district. We have the highest unemployment rate in the nation. Not the city, not the county, not the state, the nation. Right here is what we're dealing with. And while some of us are just now complaining about where we are, District 2 has been complaining about where we have been for nearly 30 years. And it has gone unheeded, for the most part. And it offends me a little bit that some publications will question as to whether or not I am being supportive of my district by doing this. Those publications only point to District 2 when they want to make their argument. Other than that, I very seldom see them in my neighborhood, see them in my area, or see them in anywhere in North Omaha. By leverage, by leveraging our community partners to develop a comprehensive program that focuses on reducing truancy and providing job training through workforce development, along with getting city services up to par, we can grow our, we can grow our own local economy and help minimize the effect of the recession and any potential impact of a double-dip recession. What in essence I am not going to do, especially in my district, is play Russian roulette with this police union contract, and run the risk of a district that is already struggling, that has already been in this particular situation for more than 30 years. I am not willing to play Russian roulette with their tax dollars, nor am I willing to pay Russian roulette with the rest of the city's tax dollars. I'm going to support this police union contract.
Thank you. Mr. Stockther.
Thank you. I just want to summarize real quick. I know we're getting ready to vote, but once again, I just want to say that, first of all, I never implied that I didn't want to do anything. I implied that I wanted to do more. The main two reasons why I object, and there's many provisions that I would like to change, but the main two are the length of the contract and the cost. The length, as we amended it, our contract ran through 2011, and this one, 2013, that's two years longer. If we are taking little bites of the apple, and we want more reform in the future, why not get back to the table sooner and try to address these issues sooner? It was stated several times about if we went to the CIR, what could happen, what could be the end result. But as you all know, in this contract, for '11, '12, and '13, we are guaranteeing 100% comparability for salary benefits and healthcare, just as if we would go to the CIR. And that will be guaranteed for three years. Secondly, the cost. Councilman Jerem made a really good point about the Calibro lawsuit. That was several years ago, filed in Douglas County. Decision was made in Nebraska Supreme Court. But what the real issue with that lawsuit was, is that the city gave an additional benefit, and they weren't willing to pay for it. So, once again, it's not just the amount of money we're putting in, it's, the amount of money we're putting in is not keeping up with the benefits. So, the Calibro lawsuit, when it was settled, it was because there was a benefit granted that the city was not willing to fund. And they said, "City, you have to fund it." So, let's talk about the cost just briefly again. Right now, the city is putting in 15.7% or .8. If you add the 4.4% with the Calibro lawsuit, and then you add another 1.3 with another judgment, the city now is putting in 21.4% into the pension. And if you add the additional 13.5, that comes to 35%. Round it up. Somebody will question me on my figures. But 35% of payroll, and to achieve pension sustainability, like this contract will over a 40-year period, that's 35% of payroll being placed in every year for 40 years. Our original, the original contract that the mayor agreed on, the amount of additional pension contributions over the term of the contract were about $31 million. And now with this new contract, they're still a little less than $31 million. So, the cost to the taxpayers over the term of this contract is great. And that's what really concerns me. We have no idea what financial situation that we're going to be in, in '11, or '12, or '13. So, for those two reasons, basically, those are the two biggest reasons. And again, I'm not implying I didn't want to do anything. I'm implying that there are different approaches. And if we would have taken a different approach from the beginning, we could have had a contract that was in agreement with both sides, a contract that did address the pension shortfall, and a contract that placed less burden on the taxpayers, and a contract that had bigger gains sooner. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson.
Thank you. And I'll make my comments quick to the point. First of all, I remember the same dynamics back four or five years ago. And I said to myself, "Well, in the future, if it doesn't happen out, if it doesn't work out, then I can blame all the exigencies and all the problems that existed in 2004." By the way, the police contract was voted on 7 to 0. It was unanimous, which means that we weren't all just sitting on our hands, bumps on the log. There were some very talented people on that council. But what were some of the things going on during that time? Well, we had citizens saying, "Don't raise taxes. If you do, we're gonna throw all you bums out." And most of those people who said, "Don't raise taxes," were in my district. Then you had the mayor who says, "If you don't pass my budget, I'll close libraries, take police off the street, and our bond rating will go into the, into the tank." Then you had the various departments saying, "If you don't pass the budget, and if you in turn lay off workers or cut services, then, then the sky will fall." There were all kinds of pressures. We didn't vote for that just because we didn't do our homework. The same exigencies and the same kind of pressures that are here now were there. And so, what I'm trying to say is, I made my vote thinking that later on, I could blame the exigencies, or the problems, or the pressures. It doesn't work that way, my colleagues. It doesn't. Take it from me, as somebody who's been there before, five years from now, you're gonna either, A, be heroes for what you do today, and if that's so, I'll be the first one to line up and shake your hand, I'll even sing at your party. But either it'll work, or it won't. If it doesn't work, you won't be able to look back and blame 2004. You're gonna have to swallow it and say, "Yes, we voted yes for it, and it's my fault," the same way that I'm accepting the fault for 2004. So, I just hope that my colleagues don't realize that there's no pushing, there's no pushing the blame off. That doesn't work. You have responsibilities for the here and the now. The same way that we have special circumstances now, there were special circumstances in 2004 also. So, whatever that vote is, then just celebrate it later, or own up to it later, but there's no blaming later. I like to also say that I see the city as a body, kind of like the human body. And if I reach down and I hack off my right foot, I'm gonna hop around. So, if unions want to take their own body to court, then we're gonna hop. That's part of that expediency thing I keep bringing back. Then also, our councilman says, if we, what if, what we have now is the new norm? And that's my point. I think it is the new norm. And because there's a new norm, we have to do things differently. We might have to only take 2.5% increase in wages instead of 3.5. It's a new day. Gotta do things a new way. And then lastly, I like to say to my esteemed colleague to the left, even though I'm not voting for the contract today, Councilman Gray, in many, many other ways, I will never turn my back on those citizens who have been forgotten in your district.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Gray.
Thank you for the comments. Mr. President, I call a question.
I told my colleague at lunch today I wasn't gonna say anything. That's changed.
Mr. President, you have, when you call the question, you're supposed to vote it straight up and down, but I, but I'll rescind that and give you the chance.
I believe, I believe Robert's Rule of Order said that there could be one more comment after the question is called. Is that correct, Mr. Clerk?
I think there's no debate after the question's called, actually.
But I withdrew it, so you...
He's withdrawing it, so you may speak.
He's withdrawing it, so you may speak.
I appreciate the courtesy.
Remember this, Mr. [inaudible].
Out of order. Speaking of out of order, I ruled Mr. Johnson out of order early on, and I think this was a good example that, number one, I'd just like to say two things. One is, just as a reminder, as procedure that we go through, when the public hearing is over, council members can call folks up to speak during the public hearing. I believe you spoke during that. Is that correct, Mr. Johnson?
Correct.
Okay. And then, once the public hearing is closed, council members can call folks back up for additional information. I was informed by the clerk prior to the meeting today that you wanted to speak, so I put your name up here after the amendment vote for the police contract. So, you were going to be called up, but Councilmember Stothard beat me to it, okay? So, it's not that I didn't want to. I did what is required under procedure, because you came up to the podium and the public hearing was already closed. So, it's not that I wasn't going to address you or anything like that. I was, I had. She was quicker on the drum, okay? All right. The second thing is, had a physical a couple of months ago, and they took blood. It was red, not blue. And, yes, I am a retired Omaha Police Sergeant, 31 years, retired at the age of 54, and I can tell you that I did not wake up in the morning thinking about who I was going to shoot. That was not my win-win type of mindset all of those years. So, I want to put to rest the concerns of folks about this vote. Mr. Kratz, did I not seek a legal opinion from the city law department? And so, what was that opinion?
Paul Kratz, City Attorney. You asked for an opinion from the law department. We provided an opinion to you that you did not have a conflict, that you can vote on this. We also sought an opinion from an outside private attorney. That attorney said the same thing. And then finally, you sought an opinion from the Nebraska Accountability and Disclosure Commission, and they also concluded that you did not have a conflict and that you can vote on this issue.
And the reason behind that, both of those opinions were what?
Simply, you're not voting on anything that's going to impact you and your retirement. Your retirement is set, and this contract will not impact your retirement.
Now or anytime, is that accurate?
That's correct.
Okay. To those that still feel, and I respect your opinion, don't get me wrong, but if there was an inkling that this would not be the thing to do, I would step aside and not vote. I personally sought out two legal opinions. The law department went a step further and sought out a third. And for those that know me, and during the time that I did serve in my other life as a blue shirt, that tried to abide by the law and have those that maybe would have been in law enforcement's crosshairs, I probably would rather have an educated individual in front of me as opposed to either a ticketed one or one that's rested. That was just my philosophy, and I've tried to stick with that in all 43 years of my public service. So, I hope we put this thing to rest. And again, for those that still feel the opposite direction, I do respect that. I hope I've just given you a better understanding that I did do the correct thing in asking for the opinions and getting the rulings. If all of the rulings came back and said, "No," then I would not vote. But in this particular case, that's not what happened. We have no further lights, and we have, call the question?
Second.
We have a second. No further lights, roll call.
Is this on the question? Is there any objection to voting and not having a roll call on the question?
Yes.
Okay. We're going to vote on the contract. This is item number 26, the union contract. Festerson?
No.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Mulligan?
Yes.
Stothard?
No.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It passed on a four to three vote.
[inaudible] in Omaha.
Pursuant to City Council Rule 70, the public hearing on general items 27 through 30 shall be held on third reading. Ordinance is on second reading, item number 31. Ordinance to approve the South Omaha Development Project for the City of Omaha located in an area generally irregularly bounded.
[inaudible] now or later.
By Center Street on the north, Harrison Street on the south, Missouri River on the east, and 42nd Street on the west. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on item number 31 begins now. Taking a few extra seconds here, because there's a lot of movement in the chamber. I don't know who's going to come forward or not. Are there any opponents to item number 31? Public hearing's closed, next item.
Item 32. Ordinance vacate in the north-south alley between Yates Street and Burdette Street from 15th to 16th Street. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on item number 32 begins now. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed, next item.
Item 34. Ordinance to accept a bit of Armark Uniforms Services to provide weekly deliveries of linen, towels, and so forth, and laundry services for the Omaha Fire Department.
Public hearing on item number 34 begins now. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed, next item.
Item 34. Ordinance to approve the acceptance of the 2010 Northeast Omaha Wheat and Seed Grant for the Northeast Omaha Wheat and Seed Target Area.
Public hearing on item number 35 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Timbuk Omaha Fire. I'm here to answer any questions you may have on this item.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed, next item.
Item 35. Ordinance to approve the acceptance of the 2010 Northeast Omaha Wheat and Seed Grant for the Northeast Omaha Wheat and Seed Target Area.
Public hearing on item number 35 begins now. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed, next item.
Item 36. Ordinance to amend Chapter 27 Public Properties by providing procedure and criteria for the naming, renaming, or commoditization of streets and park property, library facilities, or other public facilities.
Public hearing on item number 36 begins now. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed, next item.
Item 37. Orders for a three-year agreement with Nebraska Humane Society for Animal Control Services.
Public hearing on item number 37 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Judy Varner, President and CEO of the Nebraska Humane Society, 90th and Fort, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Mr. Gray, you had your light on.
Yes, sir. Just very quickly, for Ms. Varner, I would like to take this opportunity to thank the Humane Society. We still have an issue to deal with about some funds that I think we'll address a little bit later on, but I want to take the opportunity to thank you for being part of the collaborative effort with the Empowerment Network, North Omaha and Omaha 360, in an effort to bring our community together. You have been and you have had representatives at so many of our events, I have lost count. But again, I appreciate the partnership and look forward to that partnership continuing. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Festerson?
Thanks, Mr. President. Maybe just a question, Ms. Varner, and maybe a comment, too. I've seen these contracts come before the council before, and we would literally get roomfuls of people. So, maybe your timings are really good, or maybe it's the fact that...
I'm loving it.
Maybe nothing, but I think what the real issue is, nothing has changed in this contract over the next proposed term, right through 2013. It stays the same payment, same services, same fees, and no changes, right?
Right.
Great, thanks.
Public hearing's closed, next item.
Item 38. Ordinance to amend Chapter 10 pertaining to handling of city funds to create a new section requiring annual funding of the cash reserve fund.
Public hearing on item number 38 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Pam Spacrotella, 1819 Farnum, City Finance Director. Councilmembers, the proposed ordinance before you sets a goal of restoring the cash reserve fund over a 10-year period to 4% of the general fund appropriations in accordance with Section 5.03, Chapter 10 of the Home Rule Charter. As you're aware, the city's financial crisis has resulted in the transfer of cash reserves in both 2009 and 2010, resulting in a zero balance in the cash reserve fund beginning in 2011. This ordinance recognizes the need for a city the size of Omaha to maintain adequate reserves to meet unforeseen emergencies. This ordinance also recognizes the repeated comments from bond rating agencies indicating Omaha maintains below-average reserves and attempts to put in place required funding for reserves in order to maintain continued favorable bond ratings. Finally, the ordinance recognizes the financial crisis the city is currently facing through 2011 and provides for a 10-year savings plan with increased contributions as the economy recovers. The administration respectfully requests you approve this ordinance, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Mr. Thompson?
Ms. Spacrotella, please.
Pam Spacrotella, Finance Director.
Pam, you probably said this, and I just missed it. What is the minimum that we want to put in annually?
The minimum for 2011 budget is $500,000, and it increases, I believe, to $1.5 million in the 10th year.
Okay. Do we have a set percentage that we're targeting for, or is it just sort of up to the mayor each year?
It was, actually, sets a 10-year schedule, and for each year, it's indicated in the ordinance. And so, it increases approximately $250,000, I think, every third year.
Every third year, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Festerson?
Thanks. Just a similar question, too, for Ms. Spacrotella. So, the idea with this ordinance is to build up the cash reserve over time.
That's correct.
Uh-huh. And I support that intent. There is no, there's no magic to how much is being set aside, though, each year in this ordinance for the next 10 or 15 years, I forget what the term is, but the idea is just to build it up over time so we get to a reasonable level that we don't have now.
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Next item.
Item 39. Ordinance to amend Chapter 19 pertaining to the occupation tax to create a new article imposing an occupation tax on persons operating restaurants and drinking places within the City of Omaha.
Public hearing on item number 39 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Pam Spacrotella, City Finance Director, 1819 Farnum. This proposed ordinance exercises the city's authority to collect a 4% tax on gross receipts derived from the sale of food or beverages within the city limits. Receipts are subject to tax only to the extent the sale is otherwise subject to the state sales and use tax. The anticipated revenue from the restaurant tax is approximately $23.5 million, as included in the proposed 2011 budget. The tax is designed to provide the financial means to fund the city's portion of the unfunded pension liability. The ordinance provides for a sunset provision terminating upon amendment of the Nebraska Local Option Revenue Act to authorize the city to impose and collect an additional half-cent sales tax upon successful approval from the voters. The administration respectfully requests you approve this ordinance, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents?
Yes, my name is Molly Romero. I'm 5101 Nicholas Street in Omaha. I'm a co-owner of Mark's Bistro. And there are several factors that I think might be helpful in sort of assessing what restaurants can do to help the city out in its time of the budget crisis. One is that nationwide, restaurants work on a very thin margin, and it's probably about 6%. So, and it's one of the riskiest businesses, I guess, that I've ever read about or even participated in. So, when we talk about increasing the tax by 4%, we're taking, the city is taking as much as many people are taking home in running their own businesses. And another aspect of this is that if we add the 4% to the current 7%, and then the 20% that is sort of the norm for servers to take home as a tip, we're getting up to 31% above what would normally be a ticket item on a restaurant item. And it's very likely that that will come out of the server's tips. Many servers work for $2.13 an hour, which a lot of people don't understand. Their entire compensation, really, is the tips. The $2.13 an hour probably goes to pay their withholding taxes. So, I would ask that you consider lowering it from the 4%, because that is a huge burden. But I think, more importantly, it would be to change your sunset provision to an absolute sunset provision and find another way to deal with it over the next year. Instead of relying on just a legislative option to terminate this, make it a one-year-only so that it really does expire and we can explore other options. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Opponents, excuse me. I just want to see if you were awake.
You got me there. I'm Bob Freeman with Fraser Stryker, representing 409 South 17th Street, representing Metropolitan Entertainment and Convention Authority. We certainly recognize that the needs of the city are great, and your challenges as elected officials are large in figuring out how to balance our budget. And MECA is uniquely dependent on the positive momentum that the city has built up in recent years in continuing to generate people coming to the venues that we operate. But let me briefly explain to you why we think this particular tax is unfair in its application, is overbroad in the way that it's put together, and, thirdly, doesn't really fit with the policies that the city and elected leaders in the community have developed in recent years with respect to the investments made in our large venues. First, we think that a 4% tax on food and beverages is way too much of a burden on a single sector and unfairly singles out people and businesses who are consuming food and beverage in our community. It also looks a lot like a sales tax. There's not a fee imposed, as in most occupation taxes, but a percentage of gross sales, which makes it look a lot more like a sales tax targeted at a single sector, and that is rarely, if ever, done. Secondly, the ordinance is really overbroad, we think, in the way that it's put together. It potentially extends to admission charges at various venues. MECA, for example, concert tickets, UNO, Maverick hockey ticket sales, Creighton basketball ticket sales are potentially pulled into this. In addition, many of the venues in town, including the Quest Center, structure our food and beverage contracts with outside vendors, and we would want to make sure that there isn't a potential for double tax. We have some concern with the way this is drafted. And also, membership fees and contributions paid to nonprofit corporations, again, like MECA, we would not want to be brought into these. I've raised all of these issues with the law department, and my understanding is that many of these things are not intended to be included in the ordinance, but what's before you today still reflects that initial broad drafting and would need to be addressed. For fans of big government, there's an awful lot of administrative stuff built into this ordinance. There's three or four sections that put the tax together, and then there's as many as 12 sections that needed to be put together in this ordinance on collection and... twelve sections that needed to be put together in this ordinance on collection and penalties and administration and jeopardy assessments and waivers. And the, the administration of this looks uniquely burdensome for government. Let's lastly put this in a bigger context for our community. We've chosen to spend hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars in the last decade alone on public venues. Quest Center, three hundred million dollars and more. The new baseball stadium, over a hundred million dollars. The Hilton Hotel accompanying those two venues will have over a hundred million dollars invested in it and, and other facilities that I'm not here on behalf of, but we can acknowledge the zoo has had, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars of public and private investment go into it, the Holland Center, and on and on. We are all very proud of the investment made in these facilities and we want to make sure the tax policy is consistent with past decisions to invest those kinds of community resources in this town. Well, we already have decided as a community to impose large taxes on the operations of those facilities. What do I mean? If you look at the bed tax on hotels in this community, it's already at eighteen percent. We have a sales tax of seven percent. The customary service charge on banquets and food service at all of these venues is between eighteen and twenty-one percent already. These are very, very high service charges and taxes that apply. And when discretionary decisions are made by meeting and convention planners in other cities or by people planning events in our community, there is a risk that these events begin moving out of our community and away from these venues that we've spent all of this money to, to construct and to attract people from out of town and to hold Omahans to attend and spend their discretionary money. And in this business, it's very, very competitive on a price basis. And so a four percent addition onto all of these other costs is very significant. I'll conclude in saying Omaha has a great long tradition of being a community that's a great host. We have many events and now we have many new venues that we've invested greatly in to attract people from out of town, to spend their money here and to keep Omahans in our community. And in furtherance of that, we need to make sure that our tax policy doesn't begin to drive people away from spending their discretionary dollars at these venues. So we would urge the council to not support this ordinance. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next opponent?
Chris Bettini, one two seven three five Miranda Street. A few of you may have seen me in a video that a local radio host had put out about the four percent entertainment tax. And I'll reiterate a little bit of what I've said on that as well. I work for, luckily, for a guy who, not only as a bartender pays me a fair wage, also includes insurance, medical benefits and everything. It's going to come out of that paycheck, so I'll have less money to pay my, my rent, my car insurance, my things like that. And that happens with everybody, we have to do our budget adjustments. But as the last gentleman before us just said, we are trying to bring in so many big events to this city. We've got the Olympic swim trials, we've got the thirty-year contract on the, the College World Series. Those fans that come who no longer have a Dingerfield, who are unhappy with some of the proposed changes and are going to learn to like the new stadium and the new things that are going on, if you start charging them an extra four percent, that thirty-one percent, as the first person spoke of, possible on top end, is going to really hinder those people going out. So I really think that the projected amount of money that this would generate is overinflated. People aren't going to go out as much, they're not going to spend as much, you're not going to make as much of that money. Because I know it, because just as the economy dropped, people are spending less, they're tipping less, and I'm making less money without a four percent tax added on top of it. This is also an unfair tax to generate from one sector of the businesses. Why aren't you going after car rental lots? Why aren't you going after the grocery stores? Why target one sector? It's not, it's not fair, it's not right. And I think that we need to, even with, with or without that sunset clause, scrap this and do what we need to do to get that half percent sales tax increase on a vote in front of the voters, because we all know that there's a budget problem in this city. We've heard it, we've seen it go round and round. And I think people understand there's something to be done, but picking at one sector of the area is not the way to get it done. And I think we have better solutions at our disposal. Thanks.
Thank you. Next opponent?
R.J. Brown, fifteen oh one Avenue, Carter Lake. Like to bring up quite a few situations on this.
Keep it to a minimum, okay?
One is the four percent's based on the growth, if you notice, the growth amount. Channel Six brought this to the attention of the taxpayers and they're the sharpest of the bunch. Where you go, principal goes four percent, then the sales tax goes on to it. So it's more than your amount of money of the four percent. It's actually eight percent plus seven percent, which would benefit Nebraska, too, with the seven, is fifteen percent. So that portion is outrageous. Whoever bought this up, I've been in government for many, many years, sitting and watching this government. I can tell you, if you raise this to fifteen percent, it's either going to come out of the tip funds, tip money, which is fifteen percent, or it's going to go across the river, Carter Lake, around Omaha, and it's going to hurt you in the long run and the restaurants and also Mecca. I can tell you, it's one of the deadliest things I've ever seen and I know that I'm not going to support the mayor the next time. This is the worst thing I have ever seen in my life. I can believe that you're going to send the business to meet America across the river, which is free parking. They've already done it with Buffett's organization on Bridge. Wake up! Thank you.
Thank you. Next opponent?
I have, I have noticed historically that...
Name and address?
John, Comstock, five oh two one Nicholas. I've noticed historically that when the government sector wants to continue to grow or not shrink anything, it turns to the private sector and tries to find some taxes. It never thinks that the private sector is going to be affected, that they'll stop doing what is taxed. I, I was just wondering, I was curious, how many on our city council have been in the private sector? So about half. So it, it is my genuine hope right now, as far as the police and fire unions, as well as the city council and mayor, are doing what you're doing to our city with good intentions. But it's starting to get harder and harder to believe that you're doing this for good. Historically, I believe the predominant opinion in this chamber is citizens with, with a far different opinion of what you have. I, like most citizens, would have preferred to, to be left alone, to, to live my life as it is, but government on a federal, state, and local level has been so intrusive lately that I just can't sit around and watch this, this city and this country be destroyed by you thinking that you're going to get into public-private partnerships and, and make a lot of money. They've never worked out, ever. I, I believe it is my duty as a citizen to speak up. I mean, and as, above all, as a Christian, to speak out to what I see as an injustice. To remain silent is, I would see myself as a coward and, and a sin against God for what you people are doing. For years, we have naively trusted that government officials would do what is best for the general public good, that they would do, that they would be public servants over their own self-interests. Our trust has been met with program after program that rewards irresponsibility and the growth of government on the backs of private sector that have produced a form of tyranny in the local, state, and federal governments. In vain, we, we hold out hope that this government will do the right thing. The government has shown at almost every turn that they will do what is in its own self-interest. Government unions have given me an education that has made me realize that all they think of the private sector is that we are human resources and sheep to be fleeced at the end of every year. George Bernard Shaw said it well, "A government with a policy to rob Peter and pay Paul can always depend on the support of Paul." There have been discussions on conflicts of interest. Whether, whether an official lawyer or, or an expert has told you that there's a conflict of interest or not, you know in your hearts, there is a conflict of interest with many of you. I was talking to some people out in the hallway after this and they, they were saying that this is the best city council two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of union money can buy. And, and I see, that's, I, I don't want to think it that way, but when you receive that much money from a union organization, we look at you and say, "How else can you vote?"
Mr. Comstock, we're talking about an occupation tax.
Well, I'm, what I'm trying to say is that I am sick of you turning to the private sector to, to back all your great ideas. Look at the great ideas you had in the past and how they're just, they're just hemorrhaging in need of money. And so what I'm saying is, you, you've got to do what's right. This, this isn't going to produce more money, it's going to get businesses to grow out of Omaha. Right now, I have three houses I put up for sale and even after my tax property protest, I'm still selling one for twelve thousand, under the assessed value, one for twenty-four and one for thirty-four. It's a, you keep looking for money and for people who have tried to improve their property, you're going to get what you're going to get. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Next opponent? Public hearing's closed.
Thanks, Mr. President. I just had a question. I, as I stated during the previous discussion on the contract, I don't anticipate supporting any tax increases that are associated with the contract costs and I think this one definitely is in my, in my mind, so I don't, I don't anticipate supporting it. But I do, I do want to clarify a question that was raised amongst the nonprofits because in our briefings on this particular item, it was mentioned to us that nonprofits are definitely exempted from this, as opposed to the ordinance from last year, which was the entertainment tax. And there's some question as to that, at least raised by some people here today, and I just wanted to clarify that with, I guess, Paul Kratz about, or Tom Mumgarth, if you would. And the questions I've received are both what Mr. Freeman raised and I'd be interested in your comments on are, are memberships and all those things truly exempted or do we need to do something to make sure they are? And then secondly, I've received a lot of questions, too, about what about nonprofits that have restaurant operations, say like the, the zoo's food service or the Western Heritage's food service? How does that, how is that defined in here? And to me, it was explained, it seems, it seems a bit vague as to who is exempted and who's not in that regard. Your comments, please.
Okay, Tom Mumgarth, Deputy City Attorney. I'll begin by admitting that, that an answer I gave to you at the briefing last week was wrong when you asked about, someone asked about the nonprofit status, particularly the soda fountain at the Durham Western Heritage Museum. I indicated that they would not be taxed. As I look further at the exception that I was looking at, that does not apply. Not, there is no overall general exception for nonprofit activity in this ordinance. Nonprofits, religious, civic, educational, et cetera nonprofits are exempted only to the extent that they sell food solely to their members or students. That would mean, for example, that a school cafeteria is not a restaurant. The soda fountain at Durham Museum, for example, is generally treated the same as the concession stand at the ballpark, concession, concession stand at the zoo, concession stand at the stadium. It's a place where the public can obtain food and the fact that it's operated by a nonprofit organization does not make any difference. Assuming that their sales would be otherwise subject to the state sales tax, I'm going to, that's an overall assumption, I think that's true. Now you'll have to ask the rest of the question, that's all I remember.
What about memberships and tickets, that issue that was just raised?
Membership and admission charges would not, as I think it's drawn now, would not be included in the revenue subject to the tax unless that admission or membership gave you access to food without any additional charge. So the admission charge for a concert or a ballgame at the Quest Center, that does not give you access to the food, you still have to go pay more for the food. A donation or membership, for example, to the Holland Center, that then allows you to go into a members' room where there's free food, perhaps that might and that needs to be clarified.
Okay.
That was not the intention. If, if the membership, conceptually, if the membership or donation is principally for the purpose of supporting the activity separate from the food and food is then offered, given to you incidentally, it was certainly not the intention then to classify that as a restaurant where you had to pay tax.
Okay. And then in your mind, would you agree with Mr. Freeman that maybe some clarifying language is needed on those fronts or you think it's...
Oh, I think we've met with Mr. Freeman and I think there are several things that could be clearer, yes. And we've drafted some possible changes that would come down the line.
Okay. Okay, maybe just a question for Ms. Spacrotella then. Thank you. I don't, I'm sure you haven't probably diced it up to this amount of detail, so you may not know this, this answer off the top of your head, but do you know what, what portion of proceeds expected from this could be attributed to nonprofit restaurants?
In the calculation for the two thousand eleven budget, we did not include any, we got our numbers from the Nebraska Department of Revenue with respect to sales tax and it was based upon the business classification code they were reporting under and non-for-profits were not included now. And I don't believe that they would have identified themselves as anything outside of not-for-profit, so I don't believe anything's included.
Okay. So if they were excluded or exempted from this, there would be no impact to your anticipated revenue at this point?
There would not be.
Okay. And my last question was, what is the collection rate assumed on the ordinance itself?
Currently, for two thousand eleven, the collection rate is at seventy-five percent.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Stothard?
Thank you. I also wanted to make a statement that the restaurant tax is not a tax that I support or any form of it. I think it would be very damaging to an already struggling industry. I do feel like if a tax increase is needed, it should be fair and it should be broad-based. And I don't like that we're just targeting one industry. I do have a couple questions about, and maybe Mr. Mumgarth could answer them. One in particular, I got some information, go ahead.
Tom Mumgarth, Deputy City Attorney.
From the Chamber of Commerce, and they said that they have done quite a bit of review and study on this issue. And it is of their opinion that alcohol cannot be taxed with this tax and that they feel like that there would, will definitely be a lawsuit challenging this. Do you have any information on that or is that something that you've heard about and is that something that we think could potentially be a problem?
Yes, I do have, I have thought about that, we've reviewed that. I believe what they're talking about is a state statute that, as in the Liquor Control Act, that specifically says that authorizes cities to impose an occupation tax on liquor license holders. That's a tax that's imposed because you hold a liquor license. That limits the amount of that tax to two times the occupied, two times the license fee paid to the state. We're currently at that limit. It is our view, mostly, there's no court decision talking one way or the other about this. It's our view that if an occupation tax applies to someone who sells alcohol, not because they hold a license, but because they happen to be part of a group of people who do or don't sell alcohol, that is not contrary to that statute. That, that statute limits our ability to tax people because they hold a liquor license. This tax applies to people who sell alcohol, people who sell Coca-Cola, people who sell any refreshment. It is not in any way tagged to the existence of a liquor license. Because of that, it is no different than the many other occupation taxes that people who hold liquor licenses in Omaha pay. They currently pay a liquor, an occupation tax on their pinball machine, they pay many other occupation taxes. Those taxes are imposed not by virtue of the license, but by virtue of some other category they happen to belong to. they happen to belong to, and so we believe this tax is valid.
All right. Thank you. And then one other question. We brought, I brought this up last week in pre-council, and we talked about it a little, but I want to know if you have a definitive answer. A caterer, since this tax is the caterers, if a caterer lives outside of the city and bills outside of the city, but does catering within the city, is he subject to this restaurant tax?
No. A restaurant is defined as a place where they prepare and sell food to the public or offer food to the public that is inside the city. Where the food is eaten is not at all particularly important. So a caterer who prepares food inside the city and serves it inside the city is subject to this tax. A caterer who prepares food inside the city, takes it outside the city, and serves it is subject to the tax. But the reverse is not true. If you prepare food outside the city and bring it into the city, we have no ability to tax you.
All right. Thank you. And then just one question for Pam, please.
Pam Strackretella, City Finance Director.
Just in case this alcohol portion is challenged, do you have it broken down, what portion of the revenue is attributed to the sale of alcohol?
No, we don't have that breakdown from the state.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item?
Item number 40, an ordinance to amend the municipal codes 16-25 and 16-26 to provide increased motor vehicle registration fees in the amount of $23 per vehicle and $10 for non-commercial trailer and motorcycles.
Public hearing on item number 40 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Thank you, council members. Bob Stube, Public Works Director. The proposed ordinance provides for an increase in the vehicle registration fee for passenger and commercial vehicles by $23, motorcycles and all other vehicles $10. The estimated revenue of this increase is approximately $8.5 million, of which about $1 million will be set aside for park roads. Over the last 10 years, the city has experienced double-digit cost increases in asphalt, increased costs of personnel and wages, and an unprecedented snowfall in the winter of 2009, 2010. In addition, the state gas tax allocation formula was significantly revised in 2008, resulting in a decrease in funding available to cities and counties. As a result, the combined fund balance between the Street and Highway Fund and the City Street Maintenance Fund has decreased from $8.9 million in 2008 to $4.8 million in 2009, and an anticipated negative of $1.5 million in 2010. Vehicle registration fee was last increased in 2004, when it was increased from $25 to $35 per passenger vehicle. The city streets are in a state of disrepair. Existing resources are not enough to repair and maintain our streets, let alone resurface them as frequently as we should. For these reasons, the administration respectfully requests we approve this ordinance, and I'm available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Any opponents?
Chris Bettini, 12735, Merinda. I didn't know I was going to be staying for all these, but I guess there's some things I can talk about. Recently had on our street some issues with some approaches and some sidewalks that had to be repaired, and so I contacted Councilman Thompson, and we worked together and got some things worked on, and he brought this up in a meeting. In our area, which is Royalwood neighborhood, out at about 127th and Center, the general consensus was that a lot of people who live in Omaha who are licensing their cars outside of the city. You see a lot of people driving west at rush hour with Iowa plates. They're not driving from South Dakota to work here every day, but cars are licensed elsewhere. I think we need to look at not only the possibility of raising these wheel taxes for us because of the streets and the situations, but we, if you're going to come and ask us for an extra $20 or $23, what are we going to do first about the people who aren't licensing their cars who live within the city limits? And I know there was also the issue brought up that Councilman Jerome had about people who live outside the city and work within the city. My brother lives in New York City, and they charge people for that. I have family who are from Chicago originally, same thing in Cook County. If you work in Cook County downtown and you don't live there, you pay an extra fee. Maybe it doesn't have to be as much as what other people are saying, but we can all share this burden. I also think that we've got a lot of issues with, in my opinion, that we can use to try and generate some other revenue. Right now, if you get a parking ticket, it goes to the schools. But maybe we could change that so that if you run a red light, and we can get red light cameras, or if you have the speeding cameras, or other things that can generate revenue directly towards the streets. We all agree the streets are kind of crappy this year. We all know that's going to take a little extra money. But before you come and say, "Let's all throw down an extra $23," maybe we can come up with some other raise to revenue, to generate that revenue, and say, "Hey, everybody, it's going to go up $10, or it's going to go up $13." Sounds a lot better than $23. I would really like to ask you guys to put your heads together, come up with a few other ways to make this happen, and then say, "Hey, guys, we tried our best. It's still going to be an extra $10 on your license plate." That's still more than Lincoln's paying. I think they're paying $55 or $60 a person. But I see a lot of discrepancies out there of where this money's coming from, and there's some other ways we can get them. Just let's throw another tax down on these guys. Let's do another one. So please, would you look at a few other ways and maybe see if there's some other people that could share this burden than just all of us? $23 extra just makes that license plate a lot more expensive, especially when there are only $25 in Iowa and in South Dakota, and obviously, people have figured out how to do that. Thanks.
Thank you. Public hearing is closed. Mr. Mulligan?
Mr. Stube, please.
Bob Stube, Public Works.
Bob, for the city that, the size of Omaha, we've had a very, very limited resurfacing program for 2010. And with this increase, proposed increase in the wheel tax, what do you think you'll be able to do to increase the size of the resurfacing program for next year, if this were to be initiated?
What we've included in the budget for next year is that we've pretty close to doubled the amount of money that would go to residential resurfacing. We've typically put about $1.5 million into residential resurfacing. We're looking at being about $2.9 million for next year for residentials. We're also putting in about $900,000 into major street resurfacing, and what we're doing is that we're using some of the federal funds that we have potentially available to us in this area. So we would use that $900 and some thousand dollars as a potential match with some federal funds for some additional resurfacing. We've also increased the amount of money in our street maintenance budget for what would be considered as pavement maintenance. So instead of doing maybe resurfacing, it would be maybe doing crack panel replacement, again, additional pothole repair and things like that.
So in summary, do you feel like you would be able to make significant improvements to the conditions of our streets?
Well, I think I've indicated in the past that we identified, our construction division identified, that there was potentially about $10.5 million that could have been done this year, that we're in a condition that warranted resurfacing. Because of the fact that we only had $1.5 million available, that significantly limited the ability for us to do what we believe needs to be done. Again, I think I've indicated in the past is that our preference would be to have more of a pavement maintenance program that we could systematically go through and do a resurfacing, and then potentially, when that life of that pavement was reached, that we could go back in at a timeframe before it reaches the condition that a lot of the streets reached this year.
So if I heard you correctly, you said you would probably need about $10.5 million to do the job correctly. Is that correct?
Again, we identified about $10.5 million worth of work this year.
And, okay, let's just use that as a benchmark, the $10.5 million. So that, with this increase, what would you be provided then?
Again, with $3 million, and we would need, that's essentially 30% of what we would identify this year alone. So even at $3 million, it's still significantly less than what we would need.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Jerome?
Yes, Mr. Stube. How much less is Omaha's share of the gas tax formula this year because of the legislature and governor's change to provide and take more of money than Omahans pay and give it to the western part of the state?
For 2009, we experienced about $2 million less than what we received in 2008.
$2 million decrease in one year. What percentage of your overall highway gas tax revenue was in?
Street and highway gas tax is probably about $28 million. I'm asking Pam to see if she can verify that for me, but I think it's about $28 million, so a $2 million reduction on that is pretty significant.
About 8%, 7, 8%?
I'll agree with you.
In one year?
In one year.
Governor and legislature took from Omahans money they pay, gave to the rest of the state for their roads.
And just to add to that, Councilman, we are also seeing a reduction this year, in the first six months of this year, of somewhere in the neighborhood, about another half a million dollars. So that trend is still.
So I don't know what's going to happen here, but one reason, Omahans wheel tax rates might go up, you might want to call the governor and your senators and ask them why they took your money and gave to the rest of the state. $2 million last year alone. How are we doing this year?
Again, we're looking at, for the first six months of this year, about a half a million dollars less than what we had estimated for this year, and our estimates were below, you know, what we received in 2008.
So our money that we're getting, we pay in all this money, the money we're getting back is going on a downward.
That is correct.
Trend. So again, the legislature and the governor, the $2 million less last year, another half a million less this year, where's all our money going? Oh, I might say, I went turkey hunting in Valentine, and the roads, oh, by the way, that's where the chairperson of the Transportation Committee lives. Roads out there are pretty good, and I didn't see a car all day go by me. So these are questions. People want to know why your tax is going up. These are questions you want to ask. Here's my next favorite one. Of the decreasing money we are getting back of our own money that we pay when we go to the pumps, when we do get our formula, how much is OPPD taking for the streetlight fund?
We budget about, I think it's about $12 million a year that is coming out of our street and highway allocation to essentially go towards, you know, the streetlights. And so that, again, is a pretty significant chunk of the street and highway monies that we receive on an annual basis.
So of what little money we're getting back from the governor and the legislature, OPPD has their hand out, $11 million, almost $12 million a year for streetlights.
That is correct.
Now, when is the last time we audited streetlight performance to see what percentage of them actually working? Because I know in my neighborhood, it doesn't seem like the percentage is very high.
We're doing more of an aggressive effort of going out and taking a look at streetlights that are out, monitoring that, to make sure that if they're not repaired in a certain period of time, that that's removed from our bill. The problem is, is that a majority of that cost goes towards essentially the system and the maintenance of the system. The power for streetlights is not necessarily a big part of that, it's more the fact that it's the whole system itself, whether it's the pole, it's the foundation, it's the wiring, it's all that combined.
So we're taxpayers, our taxpayers are paying to put up the utility poles, or just paying to put up the traffic light and streetlights?
No. The pole where that streetlight is located on, we pay OPPD to maintain.
Not the pine poles in our backyard?
No. No, it's essentially the poles that are along the street.
So OPPD claims that they have about $12 million a year in light pole maintenance?
Correct.
That's something to me, I think, we need to have audited. And I think it's something the taxpayers ought to ask, just like we're going to have them ask the governor and their state senators why they're taking all our money, giving it to the rest of the state from the wheel tax, from the gas tax. Why does OPPD need so much money for streetlights? Because the new streetlights and SIDs, aren't the SIDs paying for those?
Correct.
I don't know about the rest of the council members, but I don't see 1/7 of 12 million of new street poles going in District 3. I don't know what, anybody else? That's a lot of money. So on your to-do list, ask OPPD board, why are you taking $12 million a year?
Councilman, can I add something else?
Sure.
The other thing that we're trying to take a look at is that we have a certain standard for lighting within the metro area. And just because of the fact that our cost for maintaining the streetlights is increasing significantly, that we're taking a look at those particular standards to see if there's other things that we can do with regard to reducing the number of streetlights. The other thing that we've talked about doing is that I think other communities have actually taken over ownership of the streetlights and provided their own maintenance. That's something else that we're going to start taking a look at.
Thank you. And a point that Mr. Bettini made, and by the way, he just Facebook-friended me. I would not have recognized you had you not done that so recently. So it's good to put the face with the name. He makes a point about people who are in the city who are registering their cars elsewhere, and I give this, you think it's offensive to see a neighbor or commuter that obviously lives here register their vehicles elsewhere. I had the privilege of driving down Center Street recently and seeing a local Omaha electrical contractor with South Dakota plates on the van. Fortunately, through the citizens who live near these people who are not registering their cars in Omaha, they call us and they email us. And fortunately, the Douglas County Treasurer, John Ewing, and his chief deputy, he has been the one handling all these for me. When we get a report, the chief deputy, Tim Kavanaugh, and he's very, he's like you and me. When we see that, it really bugs us because people are trying to evade their responsibilities. And so he follows through on those. So I would tell anybody, this is primarily a system where people who live near these people who are not registering their vehicles here, or working with them, or see them and have questions, write down the license plate, write down the address, and let us know. We'll forward them to Tim Kavanaugh, and he follows up on them for the county treasurer, John Ewing. And I've had pretty good results on the ones that I've sent in. The other thing I'd tell you is, don't forget there's more than a few colleges in town.
Correct.
And so sometimes we see what ends up being college students who don't have to pay it. And in my district, there's two universities with UNO and with Creighton.
And the Med Center.
And the Med Center. So, yeah, there is room for improvement on getting the people who are evading their responsibilities. But what's compounding the problem is a legislature who changed the formula and a governor who approved it, and the number of, the amount of the decrease of our money they're taking and sending elsewhere is getting bigger, it's getting worse.
Thank you. Mrs. Stothard?
Mr. Stube, again. You probably ought to say.
Bob Stube, Public Works.
You just sat down. I, you know, to Councilman Jerome's point, there obviously was a reduction in the amount of state gas tax we get, but I think in all fairness, there is an awful lot of street resurfacing going on that our citizens have noticed in bridge repair work. And can you speak just a little of the amount of stimulus money that we received this year that you are using for street resurfacing and bridge work?
Yeah, we got about $14.3 million that were identified for the city of Omaha. And we had four projects essentially that we used those funds on. One project was the widening of 132nd Street from Blonde to Maple. The other one is the widening of West Center Road from 148th Street to Industrial Road. We also put about $3 million into resurfacing, and then we put, I think, a little bit over $1 million into new traffic signals in the downtown area.
Okay. All right. But we do need to clarify too, I think, that stimulus money, it goes for right-ofways, it doesn't go for residential streets.
Yeah, any federal dollars that we get cannot be used on local roads. Local roads meaning residential roads. Typically, those were paid for by the benefited property owners, and so they recognize that as being something that's still the responsibility of the benefited property owners.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Steve Altman? Steve, if I can have you come up?
Steve Altman, Chief of Staff for Maricello.
Thanks, Steve. Every year, we have a legislative package that we send down to the unicameral.
Yes, sir.
And that goes down about when? In November?
Yeah, hopefully earlier this year.
Okay. And does the mayor have a plan to battle, again, trying to? Okay. And does the mayor have a plan to battle, again, trying to have a new formula for the gas turnback tax?
Yes, sir. It's his number-one priority.
And I'd like for you to know that this council will back you on that, so you'll get full support. Also, could you tell the listening audience what the plan of attack is in terms of 12 million a year to OPPD? What are we, what's our plan, if, if in fact you can say on record what it is?
Well, we have had some preliminary discussions with OPPD officials. We are looking at the possibility of some type of fee for lighting as well. We're not saying we are adopting that, but we are looking at that. And so, we have city legal counsel advising us as to what might be able to be approached on relieving that $11 million, $12 million and getting some of that back. And I think most of you know this, but the, that money was transferred in the '90s over a number of years out of the street fund in order to, as I understand it, avoid the property tax increase at that time.
And when you say a possible fee increase, in this case, you're not saying the city's going to levy it, but we're, aren't we going to ask OPPD to use their taxing authority to get that money?
Yeah, I think, I think there's some statutory problems with that, but that has been asked also.
Okay. We'd appreciate anything that the mayor can do to help us out on that end.
We'll be glad to do that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Mulligan?
Bob, could you...I just wanted to say that I wanted to thank you and your team for all the efforts that you guys have done to date so far this year with, on the road repairs. I know I was very critical earlier this year of the condition of all the streets and, you know, I know you're not done, and I know there's, there's things left to do, but I think you've done a very good job to date. Thank you.
Thank you. I think our staff would like to do, you know, the best they can, but because of the limited resources that we do have, I think we can only do so much. But we do try our best. Thank you.
Thanks again.
Thank you. Mrs. Stothard?
Why did I just forget your name?
Mr. Festerson?
Just a couple of questions from Mr. Stube as well. What is the balance of this fund right now, current balance? Or maybe it's, maybe it's a question for first finance. Sorry.
Pam Sprakotella, Finance Director. We're projecting that fund, there's two funds that the Public Works Department's used for their street maintenance, and it's the City Street Maintenance Fund and the Street and Highway Fund. And the combined, you have to look at two of them together, and the combined balance in the, on the B schedule in your budget for 2011 shows 2010 is to have a deficit balance of approximately 1.5 million, the two combined. And what's been happening is, is the costs have been increasing. We've been spending down those fund balances. And then, when the winter hit us of last year, it basically decimated both of the balances, so we're looking at a deficit.
So, regardless of what happens to this ordinance, what's the plan for 2010 if there's already a deficit?
In order to make up that deficit, then, the Public Works Department will have to reduce their spending.
Good. And then, tell me about the late fee...
You're correct.
The council did earlier this year, that's produced about, was expected to produce about $600,000 a year or something along those lines, wasn't it?
The late fee on the wheel tax? Yes, it's, and it's budgeted for a half a million, I think, below and excessive a half a million dollars next year as well.
Okay, so that's performing as we anticipated?
It is, actually. Thank you.
Good. Thanks.
Thank you. No further lights. Next item?
Item 41, Ordinance Amendment, Chapter 16, to add a new section requiring vehicle owners and operated by persons who use such vehicles to travel to work in the city to register without regard to the owner's residency, require registration fees to be used for the repair of streets and related costs.
Public hearing on item number 41 begins now. Are there any proponents? Any opponents?
Good afternoon. RJ Brown, 1501 Avenue, Old Carter Lake, Iowa. I'd like to bring to your attention that quite a few of our citizens in Carter Lake, especially last night at the city council meeting in Carter Lake, was saying that you're going to penalize people in this area and without representation. They also had a suggestion is, if you're going to take it out of their payroll taxes, that there'll be a toll booth on Abbott Drive, that one mile which has both signs says Carter Lake. I bought both signs for $195 each to make sure it was Carter Lake, and that this is a start of the outsiders telling this city council, don't reach out and touch outside the city limits. Now, the mayor seems like he wants to reach pretty far out, but his hands are off Carter Lake. And that's why the mayor sent me and a lot of the citizens of Carter Lake, which is 3,600 of them, that pays. And to your restaurants, we're not going to have much choice if you keep raising these taxes, that we're going to have to go to Iowa, or we're going to have to go to Sarpy County, Washington County, or Saunders County to our restaurants, because we're not going to have the choice. And you're driving the business out of Omaha, Nebraska. I can tell you. Please, don't pass this. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents? Public hearing's closed. Next item?
Forty, item 42, Special Ordinance Amendment, Special Tax for Cost of Clearing Snow From Sidewalks Aids a Protest.
Public hearing on item number 42 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Tim O'Brien, the construction engineer for the city. I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Are there any opponents?
Edwin Rodriguez, property owner of 2938 South 134th Avenue.
You have a statement, sir?
Sure. I'm a former citizen of, I'm a former citizen of the city of Good Neighbors, Buffalo, New York. I want to address the Douglas County, Nebraska Legislature. I am a former EMT firefighter at the connectivity solutions and manufacturer for the past 16 years. I was laid off and acquired carpal tunnel on both wrists diagnosed by Dr. Murphy, who did the surgery. I did perform snow removal to the best of my ability. I did clear, remove the snow between six and eight inches in width. My backup plan is my daughter and my wife, who is here right here. I was informed that I did not clear slash remove the snow according to the ADA guidelines, which was not mentioned to me in the door hanger. I did not do, I did not want, I could not do with my limitations with an unprecedented amount of snowfall, which I'm, which I, I seen so much in Buffalo, New York. If, if you would ask my neighbors to the north and the west, they would confirm this, that I do my due diligence in regards to my property. I am asking for the fee to be waived, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents? Public hearing's closed. Mr. Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. O'Brien, if you could come back up.
Construction engineer, Tim O'Brien.
Tim, were you aware that the, the citizen has a medical condition and verified by, by his doctors?
At the time that the snow happened and we received a complaint, our inspectors will go out and assess the sidewalk condition. We then put a door hanger up. No, they did not know what the condition of the homeowner was at that time.
When we have these kind of cases, what's, what's your recommendation once you find out that, that there are some medical issues?
Councilman, I don't have a recommendation, and that's not where our situation, where we're supposed to be doing that. We do have the Board of Equalization that we normally go through and then follow through with the public hearing. The only thing that I can say is that when we do go out, we don't know whether the individual or the homeowner is elderly, whether they have a medical condition. We're basically following what the ordinance allows us or provides us to do.
Understandable, understandable. But, thank you. Lester Brown, City Clerk. This is a case that we have already dealt with, with a prior Board of Equal, is that correct?
Buster, City Clerk, that is correct.
And what are, what are my options now? This, this particular client is in my district. What are my options, what are his options?
Well, he has presented his cases. It's up to the council to decide if there's circumstances that warrant a reduction or a elimination of the charges. And a council member, if they so desire, could request an amendment be drafted to do that, and we vote it on next week.
Next week. I will be putting that amendment forth for Mr. Rodriguez, and then we'll let each councilman decide whether or not that they'll, they'll vote for it. But I'd like to officially put that request for an amendment in.
True. There are no penalties on this. It's just the amount that's charged for removing snow.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next item?
Item 43, Ordinance Amendment, Chapter 23, creating 23-333 entitled Voluntary Furloughs, which authorizes all city employees to take up three days of furloughs in the 2011 payroll year on a voluntary basis. Are you continuing the public hearing?
Second. No lights, roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jarom?
Yes.
Mulligan?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's laid over two weeks. Item 44 is CBJ Construction Company Incorporated appeals the rejection of their bid of July 21st for the Mockingbird Road Improvement Project.
Public hearing on item number 44 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Frank Snyder, 4923 I Street, CBJ Construction. I've been in business for 32 years and done thousands of jobs for the city, not just hundreds, thousands. I submitted a bid on Mockingbird Road Improvements. It was low bid, 40% low bid. And for this reason, I think this needs to be overturned. I did not submit paperwork for the small emerging business plan because every time I asked, nobody could give me a guarantee that my paperwork, financial statements, tax returns would be safe. And it's, once, my knowledge is, once I turn it into the city, it's pretty much public record. I don't know that that's, if somebody wants to dig hard enough, they can find it. There are, supposedly, there are 80 contractors on this small emerging business plan, but there was only one other one that picked up the plans and only one that bid it. And if that's the case, where are they A few weeks ago, you ordered a contract to Coleman Construction for being low bid, and I certainly hope that I'm on at least as equal ground as him. And I guess that's all I got to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Just for the record, Mr. Snyder, as, as an elected official, nothing's sacred.
I know, I know.
Mr. Gray, are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Mr. Gray, I don't know what's going on, but I see you reaching for your light, but nothing's coming up here.
Well, you know, I'm not sure I know what's going on either, but anyway, I'll just...
Mr. Gray.
We have...
I'm returning the favor to speak.
I was hoping to, I was hoping to say that till later. Mr. President and colleagues, we, we approved a small emerging business ordinance. Within that ordinance, it contains the necessity for certifying. That was not accomplished in this case. I make a motion to deny the appeal.
Thank you. Mr. Jarom?
Mine won't shut off now. It's, there was electricity in the air today, no doubt about that, so maybe it's affecting our microphones. Mr. Kratz, are you still back there?
I'll let Michelle answer.
Okay, Michelle Peters or...
Michelle Peters, Assistant City Attorney.
The gentleman, Mr. Snyder, expressed concern that had he gone through the certification process, that his personal financial information would be public record, and I heard a bunch of people behind me chorusing, "No, no, no, no."
No, they, those personal financial records are maintained separately from what Public Works maintains, and so, Human Rights and Relations does maintain those records confidentially.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Again, I make the motion to deny the appeal.
Motion in a second to deny. No further lights, roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jarom?
Yes.
Mulligan?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
The appeal is denied on a 7-0 vote. Item number 46, Resolution That The Tier Two Bid From Swain Construction Company To Furnish All Labor Materials For The Mockingbird Road Improvements At Mockingbird Centers Hereby Approved.
Is that item 45, Mr.?
I'm sorry, 45.
Okay. A public hearing on item number 45 begins now. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
No approval.
No lights, roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jarom?
Yes.
Mulligan?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Adopted 7-0. Presentant City Council, Rule 70, The Public Hearing On Gen. Items 46 through 50 Shall Be Held On A Third Reading. Presentant City Council, Rule 70, The Public Hearing On Gen. Item 51 Through 55 Shall Be Held On A Second Reading.
Motion, Jarom.
Second. No lights, roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jarom?
Yes.
Mulligan?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Adopted 7-0. Presentant City Council, Rule 70, The Public Hearing On Gen. Items 46 Through 50 Shall Be Held On A Third Reading. Presentant City Council, Rule 70, The Public Hearing On Gen. Item 51 Through 55 Shall Be Held On A Second Reading.
Motion, Jarom.
Second. No lights, roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jarom?
Yes.
Mulligan?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Adopted 7-0. Presentant City Council, Rule 70, The Public Hearing On Gen. Items 46 Through 50 Shall Be Held On A Third Reading. Presentant City Council, Rule 70, The Public